Good evening, everyone. This is the City Council meeting for August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen. We'll start with the roll call and determination of quorum.
Nordstrom, Drew, Solomon, Doyle, Estes, Scott, Laurenti, Wright, Modrick, Roberts. We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Next, we'll have the invocation by Kathy Harris, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
My scripture for tonight is from Psalms thirty-three. By the word of the Lord were the heavens made, by their starry hosts the breath of his mouth. He gathers the waters of the sea into jars, and he puts the deep into storehouses. Let all the earth fear the Lord; let all the people of the world revere him. For he spoke, and it came to be; he commanded, and it stood firm. The Lord foils the plans of the nation; he thwarts the purposes of this people. But the plans of the Lord stand firm forever, and purposes of his heart through all generations. Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people he chose for his inheritance. From the heavens, from the heavens he makes, sorry. From the heavens the Lord looks down and sees all mankind; from his dwelling place he watches all who live on earth. He forms the hearts of all, who considers everything they do. No king is saved by the power of his army; no warrior escapes by his great strength. A horse is in vain, hope for deliverance; despite all of its great strength, it cannot be saved. But the eyes of the Lord are on those who fear him, on those who hope in the unfailing love to deliver them from death and keep them alive in the famine. We wait in hope for the Lord; he is our help and our shield. In him our hearts rejoice, for we must trust in his holy name. May your unfailing love rest upon us, O Lord, as we put our hope in you. Heavenly Father, we ask you to protect and watch over all city officials, police officers, visitors, and members of our community, to keep them safe from harm. We pray for the less fortunate in our community and ask for peace and comfort during these turbulent times. Heavenly Father, place a covering over our state and an awareness to drug dealers that this community will not tolerate people being drawn in to the darkness of addiction. Bless and forgive our weaknesses, our failings, and all of our transgressions as we ask this through Jesus Christ our Lord and Savior. Amen.
(Inaudible) the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now, we'll go on to the adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any modifications, or is there a motion to adopt this agenda? Hey, we have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And now, we're gonna have some awards and recognitions down front. I'd like to have Luke Houghan come up first. This young man was a intern in the mayor's office this year, starting May thirtieth until today. And it was good, it was good to have Luke in the office. We advertised for an intern. There was a few people that were interested, just when I thought no one could be interested, no young person could be interested. Luke was interested and came in here and helped us out with duties around the office, learned, learned some things about how city government works, and it was very enjoyable. And I thought it was good, too. Get it? Forget it. No, it's, 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 it's refreshing to see that there are people of the younger generation that are still willing to get involved and do the type of thing which would appear to be boring and mundane and very unexciting to friends and, and peers and, and so on. And so, we're very proud of Luke and proud that he spent this time with us. And so, we're saying thanks tonight. We had a little cake and, and stuff in the other room. So, I have a certificate form here, which says, "In recognition of his efforts as the City of Rapid City's Mayor's Office Intern, May thirtieth, two thousand sixteen, to August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen." So, join me in giving Luke a hand. Nice shot. Stand over here for photo. And now, we have our Veteran of the Month. Would Michael Ball come up? Stand here while I talk about you for a minute. This is the August two thousand sixteen Veteran of the Month. In partnership with the Veterans Coordination Commission, we're pleased to present the August two thousand sixteen Veteran of the Month recognition to Michael Ball. Mr. Ball was born January twenty-two, nineteen forty-three, in Denver, Colorado. Shortly after his birth, his family moved to Rapid City, where he was raised. He graduated from Rapid City High School in nineteen sixty, and shortly after his graduation, enlisted in the United States Navy. From nineteen sixty to nineteen sixty-four, he served as a storekeeper on a destroyer stationed in Norfolk, Virginia. From nineteen sixty-four to nineteen sixty-six, he served in the Naval Reserves. In nineteen seventy-four, he enlisted in the South Dakota National Guard and became active duty with the National Guard from nineteen eighty to nineteen eighty-nine as a supply sergeant. In nineteen eighty-nine, Mr. Ball enlisted in the Arizona National Guard and served as a supply sergeant until his retirement from the service in nineteen ninety-six. He retired with the rank of Sergeant First Class. During Mr. Ball's years of service, he assisted with missions in Japan, Korea, France, Italy, and several other countries throughout Europe. He states that one of the most significant missions he was part of was in nineteen sixty-two. During the Cuban Missile Crisis, he was stationed on a ship which was tasked with quarantining Cuba. The naval blockade, or ring of ships around Cuba, was tasked with preventing the Soviets from bringing in more military supplies. After retiring from the military in nineteen ninety-six, Mr. Ball went to work for Evergreen International Airlines and was based out of Arizona. In two thousand five, Mr. Ball and his wife did what any normal human being would do at that time. He moved back to Rapid City. His final position with Evergreen Airlines was as the Western Regional Material Manager until his retirement in two thousand ten. Mr. Ball is active in the community and volunteers quite a bit of his time. He has been a board member for the American Legion Post Twenty-two for nine years and was post commander for three years. He participates in the American Legion Riders and is a member of the VFW Post Twelve Seventy-three. Michael Ball has been serving our country since nineteen sixty with dedication and service, making him an excellent Veteran of the Month. His example of service makes him deserving of this honor, and we'd like to extend our gratitude to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, very nice, thank you.
Now, it's the time for general public comment. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at the meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by unanimous vote of the council members present. One speaker request form for general public comment, and that is from Robert Canizaro.
Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. I have a short statement. My wife and myself are requesting the Rapid City Council protect our low-density residential zoning by changing the conditional use permit for the Dove Christian Center that was issued twenty-seven years ago. Under the conditional use permit now in place, the Christian Center has not permitted rescue missions or tent revivals. However, the upcoming motocross is a revival without tents. They are bringing in outside vendors to provide entertainment in order to attract people to their church. This is the very definition of a revival. The event violates the intent of the conditional use permit, in our opinion. We feel that the city, the city should make changes to the permit to protect our neighborhood from this sort of activity. Please understand, we know in no way object to the usual activities held in the church, but the Dove Christian Center has twice now been permitted to hold events that would have been better suited to other venues in the city. That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Now, we're on to non-public hearing items, items three through thirty-four. There are no... We'll open the public comment on items three through twenty-six, and there are no speaker requests on those items, so we'll move on to consent items, items three through twenty-six. So, if the council wishes, it can pull items off the consent calendar, and we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Item twenty-one, please.
Okay, are there any other items? If not, can we have a motion to approve? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent items, items three through twenty-six, with the exception of item twenty-one. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. And we'll go to item twenty-one, which is Resolution Number Two Thousand Sixteen Zero Five Seven A, a resolution fixing time and place for hearing on assessment role for cleanup of miscellaneous property. Go back to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to draw attention to the council, or for the council, to take a look, a real close look at the, these items that are coming up for hearing. Once we have the hearing on them, I've got some additional information on these seven different properties that we have, and at that point, I'd like to discuss it a little bit further, what information they have, and I can also share or send this information ahead of the hearing date as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Is there a motion on item twenty-one? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item twenty-one. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, we're on to non-consent items, items twenty-seven through thirty-four. We'll open public comment on those items, and we have one speaker request on item number thirty-one, and that is Robert Mudge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I want to thank you just for the opportunity to speak. I am Robert Mudge, and tonight, I'm representing RDSS LLLP, a, as a general partner in that company. And I'm here regarding the request for variance of an ordinance on a new project we're looking forward to moving forward on in Turbin Drive, and taking this opportunity also to express my concerns regarding the enforcement of City Ordinance Twelve Point Oh Eight Point Oh Six Oh. As I said, the request for this ordinance is for a new multi-phase development that we're planning on Turbin Drive. It'll be in three phases, and I'm not certain that actually, as I look at these, the ordinance a little closer, that I even need to be requesting a variance, because it appears the ordinance does not include industrial, light industrial or industrial. It only talks about residential and commercial properties, and ours is a light industrial project. Clarification on this point is one of the things I'd like to get out of tonight, or this whole resolution. In addition, we've owned property on Concourse Drive since two thousand one and have occupied buildings there with our companies, and have been observing, observing over the last several years that the enforcement of the ordinance appears to be inconsistent at best, in the fact that when we built our first building in two thousand one, we were not required to build sidewalks. When we did an addition in two thousand eight, or two thousand ten, I'm sorry, we were required to build sidewalks, and we did so without question. But since that time, there have been several building additions to other buildings on Concourse Drive, Homestead Drive, and Turbin Drive, such that there is over twenty businesses in that area, only three of which have sidewalks, and we are one of those three businesses. This leads to my second point, where I say, I think the, it appears that the ordinance in question is not being fairly enforced. So, the ordinance in question, after reading it and studying it the last few days, I think is vaguely stated, and in my opinion, poorly drafted, needs to be changed and clarified, and then fairly inequitably enforced. It does not seem fair to require some businesses to spend tens of thousands of dollars on sidewalks to nowhere, and then the next business neighbor isn't required to do any sidewalk. So, but let me be very clear on this. I am not against sidewalks. What I am against is selective enforcement. So, I'd like to just conclude to say that RDSS and RPM companies have been great corporate citizens of Rapid City for over thirty-four years, and we want to see Rapid City grow. We want to see Rapid City prosper. We want to have a better place to live. That's what I try to do every day in our business. That's why I'm here tonight and looking for clarifications. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And that'll close our public comment period on these items, and we'll go to ordinances, starting with item number twenty-seven, and I'll defer to Alderman John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number twenty-seven, number LF zero six zero one one six dash ten A, second reading, Ordinance Sixty-One Twenty-Two, an ordinance adopting Section Sixteen Point Zero Nine Zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, requiring registration of vacant residential properties, and I move to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve twenty-seven. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item twenty-eight, number LF zero eight one zero one six dash one one, first reading of Ordinance Number Sixty-One Forty-One, an ordinance to update the regulations related to purchases made by department directors by amending Section Three Point Zero Four Point Zero Three Zero of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second to approve item twenty-eight. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item?
Number twenty-nine, number Sixteen RZ zero two seven, first reading, Ordinance Sixty-One Thirty-Four, an ordinance amending Section Seventeen Point Oh Six of Chapter Seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Dirk Jablonsky, ACES for Mike Cole, Rapid City County, for a rezoning from high-density residential district to public district for property generally described as being located at seven eighteen Fourth Street, and I recommend approval.
Motion and a second for approval of twenty-nine? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Item thirty?
Number thirty, number Sixteen RZ zero two eight, first reading, Ordinance Sixty-One Thirty-Five, an ordinance amending Section Seventeen Point Oh Six of Chapter Seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Dirk Jablonsky, ACES for Mike Cole, Rapid City, or Pennington County, for a rezoning from general commercial district to public district for property generally described as being located at three twenty-one Kansas City Street, and I recommend approval.
Motion and a second for approval of item thirty? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now, we're on to Public Works Committee items, item number thirty-one, and we'll go to Alderwoman Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number thirty-one is a request from RDSS LLLP for variance to waive the requirement to install sidewalk per City Ordinance Twelve Point Zero Eight Point Zero Six Zero along Homestead Street and Turbin Drive, and I will yield the floor to Council President Estes.
Yeah, we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion that, that if, if the, if the applicant's plan shows sidewalk on, on the first phase only, that they be granted a building permit. And if I can get a second, I would, I'd like to explain this further. Thank you. You know, I agree, I agree with Mr. Mudge. Obviously, I've gotten some emails from constituents and such about this ordinance maybe not being clear. I, I kind of think it's clear, but, but if everybody doesn't think it's clear, then, then I think there needs to be discussion. But the reason I make the motion that I made is, is that I do not want Mr. Mudge to be held up getting a building permit issued to him, because to get a building permit right now for a commercial building, a residential, commercial, basically, as the way I read yours, for any building, we, in my mind, we don't distinguish between light industrial buildings and commercial buildings. I mean, as, just as builders, you're either a residential builder or a commercial building, builder, and, and I see, I think some people read it that, that if it's, if it's, the land is zoned light industrial, then it's a light industrial building. I think it's a commercial building. But, so, that has to get sorted out, but the bottom line is, I don't, for him to get his building permit, his parcel of land will accept a three-phase project. If he's willing to at least show sidewalk on the plan for the first phase so that we don't have any issues getting the building permit issued, now, then we can work on this, because the sidewalk doesn't have to be installed towards probably the end of the project, and, and to get a CO, and, and if, that way, he's not held up, and we can hopefully spend some time to get this sorted out. And I, and I think that it, everybody should be treated fairly out there, and I, I think we, it'd be a great area to look at, maybe trying to do a sidewalk project out there, ordering in sidewalks and, or having a industrial park meeting and such, and, and looking at the whole area. So, that's where my motion's at. I, I think we need to sit down and, and look at it, but, but, and if, and if we don't, if it comes along and, and nobody else has got to put any sidewalks in, then, then prior to him, installing him, I may relook at authorizing a waiver. But right now, at, at a minimum, if he'd just show the sidewalk on the plan for that first phase, then he could get on his way. Thanks.
So, could you restate the motion for us, please?
That, that he be granted a building permit if, if he shows sidewalk on just that in front of the, the phase or the portion of the project that he's gonna build now in Phase One, because he's got, he's got a piece of property that's twelve hundred feet long that can, he can build this building in two or three phases. And so, as long as a sidewalk fronts the, the linear footage of that lot of, of the portion he's building right now, because it'd be crazy to have him put, in my mind, to put sidewalk on the whole thing and then go, be driving over it and ruin, destroying it and building, ruining the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may ask Mr. Mudge a question or two, please?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Mudge, thank you for coming in tonight and explaining your side of the story on this. I really appreciate it.
Welcome.
Does this motion make sense to you as far as understanding how, what we're proposing here?
Yes, the way I'm understanding what Ms. Estes has said is that if we put the, the sidewalk showing on our plan for the first phase, and then do the second and third phases as they come about, that would be okay. And like I said, I'm not against sidewalks. The only thing I would like to add in addition to this is I really would like to have the question answered as to why it was a new building built in the last few months on Concourse, and there's no sidewalk. It's a brand-new building, and there was nothing there. It's a brand-new building, and there's no, no sidewalk. So, my point is, I'm happy to comply with whatever council says and whatever, whatever it comes, because I'm, I'm not here to be adversarial regarding, I'm here to try to figure out, let's clarify this thing, let's make it right, and let's make everybody, have everybody follow the same rules.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert, and I agree with you. If there's some way we can clear this up, we're gonna find a way to clear this issue up, because you're absolutely right. I, I feel that we've been inconsistent on our, on our, meaning the, the council's been inconsistent on this. In my mind, I've tried to vote for sidewalks whenever they come up as part of an issue in, in this, but previous councils have said, nope, let's do a warp instead, and so, perhaps that's one of the reasons why you're seeing, seeing the non-consistency here of it, because other councils have said, nope, we'll just issue a warp and worry about it later down the line. And the other, the other component of this, and I, is that I feel very strongly, these warps are starting to catch up to us, and you're a good example as to reason why this is, is starting to bite us in the backside, and, and it's not working anywhere near where it should be and how we're complying with the ordinance and the way it should be applied.
Well, I, I think if things were clearer, too, Mr. Nordstrom, if things were clear on, on the ordinance and that was applied so that if you did a modification, or you built a new building and you had to put sidewalks and you were required to do it, and that was enforced, most of that area over the last eight years would have sidewalks.
Yes.
Would have sidewalks today.
Totally agree, and I, I, I can sympathize with your position as well, but I'm gonna be staying in the position of, of, we need to start, start installing sidewalks.
I agree.
We haven't got a good plan right now, but I think this is maybe one of those... but I think this is maybe one of those steps that makes the impetus to get started in that direction. So I appreciate you bringing forward this, and I appreciate, really appreciate, your willingness to work with us on this project. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I yield.
We'll go to Darla Drew now.
Thank you, Mayor. Before I address this issue, I just want to make one point that tonight we're seeing the first-ever gender equal council. Four women, four men are here tonight to govern the city, and I like that. Let's see here. Sidewalks. I want to be fair and equal, too. So I'm just going to say developers, contractors, home builders, build it into your budget. Because to borrow a line from Game of Thrones, sidewalks are coming. It's been a long time. They're going to be here. We're going to have sidewalks. And we're not going to make these kinds of just arbitrary decisions anymore. We're going to start laying down the law. And so, Mr. Mudge, I appreciate your time and your point on that. We have to be fair and equitable, and we need to enforce it. So we will probably bend the law a little bit, bend the ordinance on this one, but it's probably going to be one of the last ones, you see. Thank you.
Now we'll go to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mudge, if you could come up, please. Thank you. I just want to gain your understanding of the motion on the floor and what my understanding is, and I'm hoping maybe the council may be clearer on it already, but I'm personally not. So this is my understanding, and you can tell me where you are after I explain my stance on this. But my understanding of the motion is that you will put in the sidewalks with each phase of your development. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Okay, so when phase one is done, the sidewalks for phase one will be in. Is that correct?
That's my understanding.
Phase two, same thing, phase?
Yes.
There are three phases for this development?
That's the way we have it laid out now.
How long are we looking at from phase one to phase three completion?
I don't know. I can tell you that in our past, we built new in 2001. We added in 2010. We added in 2012. We're growing rapidly. So our hope is that the new building that we're putting up will keep us in that building for three to five years, but it may be six or seven. I can't guarantee anything on that, Mr. Laurenti.
So for phase one, when do you expect phase one to be completed?
Roughly a year from now.
Roughly a year from now. Okay, that's all I needed to ask you. Thank you. One last thing on this, and I'm kind of still sitting on the, I'm not sure on this. I think we need to, I think the mayor said some good things about these warps in his budget presentation, and I know that it's something we have discussed many times on this council since I have been serving. Unfortunately, we can never get a majority of the people to agree to make sure that these developers are putting in the sidewalks. And I think this is an opportunity for us to begin now. And I agree with Mr. Mudge that we have not been consistent. However, this is a new council, and I think if we're going to order the sidewalks in, which I think we should, we need to come back with another ordinance looking at what is developed out there on that particular street and make all things equal, as the gentleman had said. I don't think he's against doing these sidewalks, but I think he wants fair and equal treatment. And I think if we order the sidewalks in, we need to come back with another ordinance for that street, not an ordinance, but a motion or an agenda item that orders in the sidewalks to make all things equal out there. I yield.
Okay, thank you. Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been sitting in on city council meetings for years, and sidewalk seems to be one of the regular topics of discussion and has been a long time. And I really respect what Mr. Mudge said when he said that we work off of an ordinance that may have enough holes in it that it's, so much so that it ends up in a constant variance option with a warp. So the ordinance itself obviously is overdue for a review. And this council needs to get strong with where we're going. Are we going to order in sidewalks? And if Mr. Mudge is putting it in as it phases in, then shouldn't all that are out there now be called up? If there's only three, and his business is one of the three, but there's twenty that it built, I don't necessarily agree with sidewalks to nowhere, because if they're not maintained, they fall apart. But at some point, if we're going to, on this motion, say that his organization has to do another sidewalk as he phases in, then it's time for us to warp up and become consistent with this ordinance. Because we spend a lot of time, the city council previous, and I can see it coming in the future, because we're growing. We've got so much opportunity. This is going to come before us, and it's sensitive enough that we waiver. So with this motion, if it does go through on the floor and we order this in for his phases, I believe we need to also call it up. If not, then we need to change the ordinance so that we can clean it up. And that's how I feel.
Thank you. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to the motion on the floor right now to go ahead and order in the sidewalks in this area. And if I can get a second, I'll explain. So I agree, and my interpretation of our sidewalk ordinance is that the wording in there at the time that this ordinance was written was residential and commercial, commercial covering everything else that's not specifically residential. So there is no, we're not breaking down ordinances and trying to list every zoning possibility in there. So my understanding is exactly the same as Alderman Estes. The ordinance classifies all buildings, and so at the time of the building permit, the sidewalks are supposed to go in. What city councils have done in the past is Rapid City has grown not consistently. So we have these pockets of new construction out there, and that's where we kind of get into that situation of those sidewalks going to nowhere. A lot of talk around the city council for the last few months have been, we as a city need to grow, and we need to be putting in those sidewalks. And it may get to the point, if we don't start honoring that and having the sidewalks go in at the time of the building permit, the city council may have to tap into taxpayers' money and actually go back and do this. That's not right, to put that future burden on the taxpayers. So what I've been hearing over the last few months is that the city council is ready to start getting sidewalks installed. We're looking at bike paths with the new major plan developments for the comprehensive plan. I'm hearing from everybody here, which is why I want to make this friendly amendment, because I would support ordering in these sidewalks at this time. And thank you for listening to me. We'll see where the vote goes, and we'll see if everybody who's talking up here is a stomach to continue it. Thank you.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you. I think they're stomach. I would like to ask for a point of order, though. It would appear to me that to order these in without the proper notice to these other businesses is probably not the best approach. I'm not sure that we can do that and tie that to Mr. Mudge's request. I think they need to be taken separate. Mayor, would you like to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I agree. Chair would rule that amendment out of order. There are other parties involved in that action and without proper notice, so we can bring that back at another time. So the original motion, however it's worded, is still on the table.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Alderwoman Doyle, because I had some concerns about just calling in a bunch of sidewalks without any notification or without even us knowing what was going to be called in. I know that that area out there has grown immensely, but one of the things that I'm worried about is if we just blanket and call in a bunch of stuff out in one area, how many of these sidewalks are actually going to be interconnected? I mean, are we just going to have sidewalk here, and sidewalk there, and sidewalk here? And I think it's a good idea if we can get that interconnectivity out there, but how are we going to do that on any properties that may be vacant or may not have a building on it? So I would like to see what the area actually looks like and have the council have an opportunity to look at what's out there before we just start blanket calling in sidewalks that may be piecework and patchwork. So thank you very much.
And we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, if there's no objection, I will go ahead and send a request to place this, just an assessment on the next Public Works agenda, just so we can take a look at it and see what would be going on out there, and then we can discuss it as it comes across the dais.
Okay, we'll go back to Steve Laurenti, two minutes.
I could beat that, Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to chime back in, because I want to urge my colleagues, I believe the current motion on the floor is to have them have it on phase one, and then as they phase it in. However, I want to urge my colleagues to vote against this particular motion so that we can get back to the original motion and get these sidewalks put in, and then come back with a plan from staff with all of the contiguous properties to these, this phases, one, two, and three of this one, and get those all connected and order in those ones that make a nice, complete sidewalk that Mr. Mudge was talking about that have not been ordered in. So I want to urge my colleagues to defeat this particular motion and get back to the original. Thank you.
Okay, now back to Brad Estes for one minute.
Thank you. I'm not sure which motion Alderman Laurenti wants defeated, because I think as a point of order, one just went, the second one went away. But I guess, I got a headache, and I'm having a hard time thinking up here. It's bouncing around in here. But that's one of the reasons why I was trying to stipulate to you, let's get him his building permit. And sidewalks don't have to be installed until he gets a CO, and we've got some time to work on this. Because at the end of the day, what I didn't say, but what I wanted to say is, is that at the end of the day, if we don't have the intestinal fortitude to order in the sidewalks out there, then we should give him relief before he gets them poured. I've, and I agree with Alderman Roberts. The area needs to be looked at, but not scientifically and not professionally. I drove around the area, and it's probably one of the areas that has probably the highest degree of lot percentages being developed. Yeah, there are a few lots out there that remain undeveloped and stuff, but it looks to me like a good place to try this ordering-in sidewalk business, because topography-wise, it looks like it'd be fairly easy. There's not a lot of challenges, in my mind, very unprofessional. And like I say, there's a high percentage of the lots developed. There are a few spots. But anyway, that's where I was at, is let's not hold up getting him his permit. And I don't want him to do anything that we're not going to make anybody else do. And if we don't have, if it turns out that we don't order in sidewalks with the rest of it, then he should be relieved of his duties. So thanks.
Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor. My feeling is, it's a sidewalk. It's, we tend to sit here on the fence of a sidewalk so often, and we've got a motion that says, well, we're going to, even though he's requesting a variance, as all the others have come before us, even since I've been on council, it's such a short time, he's requesting a variance, and we're saying, well, go ahead and build, but let's have you do this little piece, and then we're going to clean it all up, and we're going to figure it all out. And I don't think that that's good for Mr. Mudge's business, too. This request, outside of the motion, is the fact that it was a variance request. We just honored another one. We're doing sidewalks to nowhere. We need to make a decision. Maybe when it's, maybe that ordinance needs to be that once we meet up sidewalk to sidewalk, we order in the sidewalk. But if we continue to patchwork, these sidewalks are going to fall apart on these businesses before they even have a chance to be used by pedestrians, because sidewalks to nowhere don't, they don't get cared for as much. So it's my feeling that we go back to what the request was originally through Public Works, and that was a proper request for variance on this one, and we could do as we've done with the others, clean up our mess with our ordinance, figure out what we're going to do, and then call it back up again when it's time. But perhaps get him out of jeopardy while he wants to proceed forward.
Okay, thank you. A couple more lights up here. I just want to restate the motion so that we're all clear on what we're talking about. The request was for a variance. The motion involves Mr. Mudge putting in sidewalks in the phase-one construction, not putting them in in future phases now until those phases are under development. Correct?
Okay. Now we'll go to Richie Nordstrom. For a minute and fifty seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. Very quickly, it'll be, I'm supporting the motion that Alderman Estes brought forward on it, because I'm not seeing this as a variance. I'm seeing this as more along the line of a planned development. And Mr. Mudge has agreed to put this in as phases. So it's not really a variance or a waiver of right to protest or anything like that. I'm looking at this and at seeing this as more of a planned development that Mr. Mudge has agreed to. So that's why I'm going to be supporting the motion. Thank you.
Now to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Question for Mr. Teck, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Okay, the question is this. Essentially, what we're discussing here is denying his request partially and approving it partially. So because it's one parcel, three phases, how much administrative challenges that creates staff to track this?
With our new building permit software that we have, it'll be easily tracked. We can load that note regarding sidewalks and attach it to the parcel. So every time any permit is issued or requested, that note will be there, so it should be really easy to track.
Okay, perfect, because I, I mean, I agree with what's being stated up here, but I certainly wouldn't want to place him in a position to have to tear sidewalks out and waste that expense. So thank you very much.
Okay, so the modified motion on the floor. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, that motion passes with two noes. And now we're on to item number thirty-two. Back to Legal and Finance Committee items. John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number LF-081016-03, authorize mayor and finance officer to sign assignment for tax increment District Seventy-Six, Buffalo Crossing between KS West LLC and SK East LLC and First National Bank, and I recommend approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of item number thirty-two. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, let's have a roll call, please.
Estes. Scott.
Aye.
Laurenti.
No.
Modric.
Excuse me? Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Nordstrom. Drew. Doyle. Motion passes five to three.
Okay, on to item number thirty-three, please.
Number LF-081016-10, Resolution number twenty-sixteen-zero-five-nine, extending an offer with a limited election window to eligible employees to elect a voluntary early retirement incentive. And I'm not going to make a recommendation on this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. And we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. If I may, request of the mayor to make some clarifications on a few of the items that are received in your letter. And I'm going to support the motion, but I just need some clarification on a few items. And the first one is the general belief beginning with the pay for city employees is low compared to the private sector and other entities, while the top end for the same positions is very high compared to the same examples. If you could give us some illustrations as to what that is referring to. And then the second point I'm making here is just to be clear, And then the second point I'm making here is just to be clear, there's nothing wrong with retirement eligible employees working for the city, nor is there anything inherently wrong with having a generous pay scale available for the employees. Mayor, it just looks like a contradiction in terms, so just another clarification is needed on that. And, and then on the point about the strict, on the cost benefit analysis, the city is paying too much for services of some of our employees. Again, if I can have some information of what that means or what that stands for or who, what positions, not a who, but what positions are being compensated on the extreme. Another point is that I totally understand and agree with your point that the city assets of the employees are both most valued and most expensive. I just want to make sure that you understand, or the public understands, that this has been a process, been in the works as far as long as I can remember. And the current study that is underway or has been done, I should be, should say, has been completed is the hay study, or excuse me, the Condry Study. The hay study was a previous study that brought up these, these points in the proper compensation for the employees. And so while I agree that those that voluntary retire early, it is a good cost savings for the city, but I just want to make sure it's clear to the employees that, that, that there is, that they're being compensated fairly. Because those studies that we've done, that the city has done in the past has been fair to the employees and to the citizens of Rapid City. And, and in the future, you're also looking for the wage scales, starting with the non-union positions, to be downward adjustment to their upper end of any positions. My concern is on that is that we've been preached to for several years from those studies and both hay and Condry. The concern then at that point was the compression on those, on those positions. Then that's one thing that we've tried to stay away from. And, and I can explain further what compression means. And I'm sure you already know that point, but those are just a few of the examples that, and again, I don't need an answer right now, but I think you're just more of a clarification for the employees. Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Barbier a question or two?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Yeah, are you going to approach the podium, Jeff? Would you please outline this? I believe the, when I asked the Mayor about this, he said that you had all the data to back this and I will admit, if you've attached it to the agenda tonight, I did not have time today to look at it.
Thank you. Jeff Barbier, Community Resources Director. I did not attach it. I brought it in this form. What we've got here is, it's difficult to say when you say numbers, how much is this going to save us? The truth is, we have no idea because we don't know how many employees are going to take it. We've got 30 Class B employees eligible. We've got 62 Class A employees eligible. By eligible, that means that they've met their retirement age under SDRS and they've worked here 20 years, so they've been entitled to the city-paid health insurance. So if I can explain what my spreadsheet, the best way that I thought we could break this down was to look at the average break even in months. So we have to make some assumptions here. So we'll take this top person, and I took the names and titles out of these so you couldn't tell who they are, but these are actual figures. So this person's salary is $46,000. I make the assumption, okay, so their, their years of service is 38 years. They're 58 years old. So you can see that if we hire a new person back at 33, 9, 11, and where I got that is it's step seven, which is now on the new system, is our equivalent to step D. Because I didn't, the numbers would look even better if we could make the assumption that everybody we hired back, we could hire at step one, but that doesn't always happen. So I made the assumption of step seven to just try to give us an average. So then we look at what that annual savings is of almost $13,000. The three-month bonus that we would pay out is here. So you can see that one, for example, break even in months. That breaks even in less than a year. So if you, it of course is different for different positions. It bases, it's based on what step they are now and what that, how that would compare with step seven in their grade. But when you go through all of these people in Class A, you get down here and the average payback in terms of months is just over 15. Because there's no way to look at this in terms of what do all these people make compared to what the bonus is going to be. I mean, we could run those numbers, but it's unrealistic because of these 62 people, are two of them going to take this deal or are 40? And that would completely change the numbers. But I'm trying to make the point that if you look at the payback for each one of these people and the average, it's pretty reasonable that when you think about in less than 16 months, in, on average, by doing this, by paying out this bonus, the city would be money ahead. And then from then on, continue to save into the future. Class B, again, same drill. We get the average break even for these people in months. There's 30 of these. The average break even is about, is almost 21 months. So not as efficient with the Class B, which is the public safety employees, but again, within 21 months, on average, the city's making money by offering these people this three-month bonus to take early retirement. Does that make sense?
It, it does, and it is one analysis on this. I have a couple other questions. Because you're going and you're trying to average out and, and as most averages, if somebody pays $10 and somebody pays $80 or $90, let's make it even, the average is 50. But 50 is a long way from that 80 and it's a lo, or 90 and it's a long way from that $10. So when you're dealing with averages, it's one way to look at it, but, but like you're saying, it's really not giving us the picture. What I am more interested in, and I did ask this question of the Mayor and I was hoping you could provide this, I don't see it on one of your tabs tonight, but let's assume 40 people, let's say half of the night, let's say 45. If there's 92 people that are eligible in this program, let's say half of them go. What is the cost of that three-month payback on half of them, since you're dealing in averages?
Well, again, I didn't make assumptions in terms of how many people would take them. But if you take all these Class A individuals right now, their total salaries are just above 3.7 million. If we hired all of these people back at step, at step seven, like I said, it would be about 2,858,000 would be the new salary number. So there's close to a $900,000 savings if everybody took it. But you're right, in, in total salaries, but everybody's not going to take it. And so I didn't make any assumptions whether it's going to be two people or 40 people because I, I don't know how to guess that. I don't feel like I could even come close.
So out of these people, and, and when you're saying, this is just the Class A, correct?
Right.
That we're talking about right now. So out of this Class A, if, and again, the numbers, worst-case scenario for the budget or for the finances, if all of the people in Class A opted to retire, what is the total cost of the three-month severance or the three-month bonus incentive for retiring? For these classes? Because you've, you've taken it all out.
Okay, if everyone took it in Class A, it would be about 932,000 that we would pay out in bonuses.
And Class B?
559,000.
So roughly $1.5 million?
Roughly.
Okay. So just using your average scenario then, if we just even used half of them, there would be $750,000 that would come out of this year's budget. The reason I'm asking these questions is I'm leading up to this. In the 2016 budget, what is the point in which you would have to come back for a supplemental appropriation in order to cover the number of people retiring?
You know, I'm not sure what that would be. There would obviously be departments that would need supplements if they got hit hard by this retirement. But again, you would look at those 15-month and 21-month numbers, it's going to come back to us. But you're right, there probably would be some departments that might supplement through 2016 because they didn't plan for this. But that hits us, you know, that hits us in other ways too with employee expenses because sometimes we end up with a considerable budget left over in that salary line item if we have a lot of turnover that year. That's another thing that's really hard to factor in. And why these numbers, the 15 months and the 21 months are conservative? Because when somebody retires, the spreadsheet makes the assumption that we hire somebody back at step seven immediately. Well, you can hire somebody immediately. Depending on the position, it's 30 days to 90 days generally before the next person is actually sitting in that seat. So you're going to have, you're going to have a period of time where you're not paying anybody once, once the retired person leaves and, and then we've got a little bit of a gap. So there would be an additional cost savings there. Again, depending on how many people take it, really hard to quantify.
Well, and, and I'm going to go back because unfortunately government budgets are set year to year. So when you're saying there might be cost savings, there may be, but based on the budget, it doesn't. Because I'm going off of what I read, my understanding of what the letter I received from the Mayor. And that was, he was, if this gets passed by City Council, he's going to offer up to, to these 92 city employees that this one-time deal, because they're eligible, that they can go ahead and retire. They can select their retirement date if, and I'm going worst-case for the budget.
Right.
Worst-case scenario for the budget, if all 92 people decide to retire on December 31st, there is no savings on their salary for 2016 and we will have to come up and supplement for this $1.5 million in order to cover the bonus incentive.
Well, I don't know that we'd have to supplement the whole $1.5 million, but we'd probably have, some departments would probably need a supplement, yes, I would assume.
Okay. Thank you, I think that's all the questions I have now. I, I'm not sure I'm ready to vote on this tonight and just based on my past experience, if I'm not ready to vote, most likely I will vote no. I would rather see a substitute motion to continue this just so I've got a little bit more time to look at it. But I'll listen to what my other colleagues have to say up here and see if I can crunch the numbers, Jeff, and make myself comfortable. Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, thanks for bringing the data. That was one of the things that I had asked for as well was, because it was talked about, the worst-case scenario, and I was hoping we were going to get to see data, an assumption based on that worst-case scenario. So I do see what you're talking about and I think, I think it makes, obviously it makes sense. When you're looking at it, the payback, you know, some of them go beyond the first year's budget. However, we, as a council, in my opinion, we need to think a little bit further than the, the first budget, even the second budget. We're talking about three, four, five, six, 10, 15 years from now. So I would urge my colleagues to support it because I, I don't think, even in the worst-case scenario that I'm looking at, the city doesn't come out ahead. Maybe not in this first, in this budget year that we're in, but as we move forward into the second and third years, the request from those departments, I'm hoping, would be less because they are paying a lot less in wages and salaries. And we all know that wages and salaries are the largest expense for government and for public businesses. So I think it's, it makes sense. I think in the worst-case scenario, we're getting our money back over a longer period of time, but I think we need to think longer term than just this next budget year, so I will support it. Thank you.
Okay, since there are no other requests to speak, as Richie Nordstrom explained when he spoke, this is complicated. There are some pay examples. And in the city, you have two types of employees. You have employees where there are private sector comparables and there are employees where there are no private sector comparable. So there's not private police, firemen in the community that we can compare with. There are engineers and attorneys and other job descriptions and, you know, support staff and so on. And I didn't bring a list of them here. And so anecdotally, we hear from service providers all the time, I wish I made as much and so on and so forth. And we have some data sharing between, or some information sharing between these private companies that suggests that our, our folks are, some of them are, are paid better than the private sector. So experience is good. And if there was a perceived contradiction in the letter I wrote, maybe there was. And that, I'll go back to, to stating this, that this is a completely voluntary incentive plan. We have over 90 city employees who are sitting on the ledge of retirement and for one reason or another are not making that move. That is, one in eight city employees are eligible for retirement. And many of those are in the upper end, some of them at the very top of their pay scale. So the simple, simple calculation is that most city pay scales between the starting point and the finishing point, the lowest and the highest point, is about a 50% difference. So Mr. Barbier's examples took an assumption that we would hire back a replacement employee at the highest starting level possible without getting City Council approval. And that's simply not the case in, in most, most hiring instances. Most of the time, we do hire at the lowest step. So some of these, just on the chart, some of these savings in the first year were 12, 15, $18,000 in one year. That's just math. So no one should feel, although I understand there are some employees who feel like they're being targeted or picked on, but this is, you can choose this or not. And if you choose not to take it, then you can stay here and live out the rest of your days as, as long as you're holding up your end of the bargain. There is talk around the, the building and I think there are going to be some people interested in taking this. And in virtually each and every case where someone takes this incentive, it will result in a cost savings, at least in the second year. So there have been a number of wage studies. Those are, again, complicated by the private sector comparables that we have in our workforce. So the, in the worst case, if everybody, if everybody in that class of employees took it, $1.5 million paid out in incentives and $800,000 and $900,000 in savings for all the years after, until those employees become senior over the course of decades. So this is just meant to be a simple way to trim some of the labor costs. And I think that it's, I understand why, but it doesn't mean I agree with the fact that, that government is really the only industry that doesn't worry a lot about its labor costs. In the private sector, labor costs are the number one thing that will take a company into bankruptcy. And there are several companies who do some, you know, seemingly cruel things to the workforce because they, they're having trouble making ends meet and so they get rid of all the employees and start fresh. We're not doing that. We're not forcing anyone out here. It's an incentive that will save money. So that's my pitch on that. Now we'll go back to Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. If I can, I'd like to ask the Finance Officer a question, if I may, please.
Yes, you may.
Pauline, my question for you is, we have a 2017 budget that's been presented to us. I believe this goes into effect after we pass it in the appropriate days after the approval. My question to you is, for 2017, if we have 20, 30 people take advantage of this, how will that reflect on the 2017 budget?
There's a couple different ways that it could go. They, my understanding is they would have an opportunity between September and November to request taking the, the early retirement plan that's being proposed tonight. If we don't know who's taking it until November, then it would be too late to do anything with the original appropriation ordinance because we have to have that approved by October 1 and get that to the county. However, if the council wanted to, they could go back after the fact. You don't usually see supplemental appropriations that actually decrease a budget, but you could definitely do that if that's what the council chose to do. There may be some that elect to take it if, if approved early enough where we could change for a second reading, make some adjustments, but more than likely, it will be after the fact.
So based on what you're saying, is that there's a way, obviously, that we can track this, right? Because you're saying there would be a supplemental possibly that might come back that reduces the budget, which is like, would be unheard of. I think most Rapid City citizens would be like, what? Maybe I didn't say that right, but I've seen a lot of commercials with that in it. But anyway, you're, we could be tracking this, correct?
Correct.
So that's my question. I guess, not a question for you, but really something we need to talk about at budget hearings because if they can track it, could we not earmark this for, say, infrastructure? Reshift these out of these cost centers? Is that possible? Am I talking about something that would not be possible once we pass the budget? Say, worst-case scenario, as you said, we might not know till after the budget's passed in October. But can we shift the savings out of the cost centers to infrastructure?
Absolutely. You would have the decrease in the... You would have the decrease in the org codes that have the people that are electing to take it, and then you could increase the budget for, probably would come out, depending on what infrastructure you want, come out of the org code and those line items specifically for the infrastructure needs for that year.
Is there anything we would need to put in place? As far as, would you need direction from council? Would there need to be something passed that would encompass this savings, this potential savings that we're talking about? So that we can say, "It's X dollars," and pass a resolution, or whatever we need to do to move that money to infrastructure?
I, from my perspective, I would like specific direction at that time. Maybe perhaps what could happen is after the, the election period expires, there could be a report back saying how many people took it, what savings, you know, the dollar amount that we had to pay out for their early retirement benefits, and kind of do, have a wrap-up report where we would know then what you want us to do with those savings.
Okay, thank you very much, and I'm hoping maybe we can get an amendment to this resolution that puts that on there, that we're tracking this so that we can capture that money and, and move that to infrastructure. I'm hoping we can get an amendment to the motion. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mayor. I think there's a little bit more than just talking about money here. I'm, I'm kind of concerned about the knowledge base that these people would take with them, and just replacing them might take a little bit longer than you would hope, you know, so that savings might not really be what we're looking at here. And that's hard to, to measure, but it's just a concern of mine. We're not getting rid of people that just started these jobs. They've been in these positions a long time, and they know what they're doing. And to the mayor, I just want to ask a point of clarity here, just so that people on watching will know, this is a one-time deal. This is not gonna come up next year, it's not gonna keep coming back. This is a one-time deal that we're offering these employees, right?
This is a one-time deal for this mayor.
Oh, okay.
I can't speak for the next mayor.
Of course you can't, but, yeah, all right. Well, just, just so that we're clear on that, because people at home want to know if this is gonna happen every year, and it's not. So we're gonna make this clear to people that if they want to take this deal, take it now. So that's it, thank you.
Okay, now Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I appreciate your efforts here, Mr. Mayor, and what you're trying to do, and there are some unknowns, how much institutional knowledge is gonna walk out the door and such. You know, but if, as I li, as I listen to the conversation, and I imagine tonight's conversation, I imagine what the people at home are saying, they're probably, after the sidewalk deal, they're probably thinking that Estes guy's an idiot, but other than that, that's fine. But I do have a question for you. In listening to Mr. Barbir talk, you know, if, if you've got ninety people that qualify, and half of them take it, or let's say forty of them take it, and, and it takes up to three months to get them replaced, the people out there are probably going, "Well, that's a hundred and twenty employee months." I mean, that's like not having ten people in a year. I mean, so do you, my, my real question to you, Mr. Mayor, is, and I don't know if you're prepared to answer, is, do you envision, as people leave, a study of the FTE requirements, or do you envision all of these people being replaced?
Well, that's a great question. I don't think I have a definite answer for you. It all depends on who, and from which departments, and how the departments react and evaluate those losses at the time. I believe that that's the perfect opportunity to evaluate the position while you're preparing to fill it, and, but I can't speak specifically if we have our, I mean, we don't specifically have our eye on any one of these positions to eliminate at this moment, but I believe a, an evaluation within the departments is in order.
Thank you, because what, what I would envision is that if you've got people that qualify for this, and they're at the top of their pay scale, they're probably fairly high up within their department, so if they left, there might be some interdepartmental promotions, and then the new person, if, you know, would be at the entry level, perhaps. So it, A, it's hard to gauge, and B, doesn't mean that the, the person that's actually retiring doesn't get replaced. It might be just, it might be somebody that's, once you, everybody ratchets back up the ladder within, you know, with promotions, and, and the, with the institutional knowledge and such, I, I just, hopefully, we have an opportunity, and I know you will take that opportunity to, to go over the FTE requirements with your department heads. Thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to commend you for stepping out on a limb and doing this. I think what you're doing is a very good idea in theory, and we're gonna have to watch and see what happens. But I think that, in general, the cost savings looks good, the possibilities may be good. Jeff, can I ask you just a couple of questions, if you don't mind? Are there any departments that are real top-heavy in here? Do we have any departments, say, that have sixty people, or forty, or twenty, that are gonna lose a proportionate amount of their people, or is it spread out within the city? Is it the bigger departments, like Public Works, PD, Fire Department? What's, what, what are?
Well, I think you, you've got a good point, that some departments will lose more people than others, of course, but the bigger departments are the ones that can probably afford to lose more people. I mean, it would make sense that Public Works has more people on this list than anyone else. They've got more employees than anyone else. So I don't see any particular department where you say, "Boy, you know, we could potentially lose all the management," or anything like that, no.
I guess my concern was, you know, that one of the smaller departments maybe lose twenty percent of their workforce, then you could really have an issue there. But, you know, if it's Public Works, you lose forty people, you know, five percent, yeah, that's a lot of people, but, you know, I worked for county government for fifteen years, and I used to say if, you know, twenty percent of our department didn't show up, we wouldn't realize it, so. But that's county government, I don't know about city government. But anyway, no, I'm just kidding. We've got wonderful departments within the city, wonderful department heads in the city. But, you know, I think that Richie brought up a point earlier, saying, you know, what's the comparison of these people? I'll give you a comparison, when I worked for the county. I made about twice what the private sector made, doing the same job. And, you know, that does happen, depending on what you do and where you're at within government, what it is. You know, there's, there's certain jobs that are way out of line, and there's certain jobs that aren't out of line, okay? For example, like the mayor said, how do you compare the police and the fire department? You can't, and you don't want to. We shouldn't. They should be paid, and they should be paid well. Engineers, it's easy to, to track that, because you have the private sector and you have the city, but a lot of those jobs in between in Public Works are really, they're fairly easy, they're fairly easy to check. And Richie's over there giggling, because Richie used to come into the county and check our, our grease traps and stuff, so. Anyway, I know, I know, you know, you know, and I don't know about, like I said, the city. A lot of the employees that I see, there are departments that are understaffed, I understand that. There's a lot of things within the city that need to be done. I see that now in my business, which worries me, but I think the mayor's going in the right direction. We need to take the money that we have, and we need to refocus on a lot of different things, like Mr. Laurenti said, save money for infrastructure. I don't think we can always be thinking of, how are we going to generate more money when we have a lot of money in the pot? We just need to figure out how to use it better. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. The motion on the floor is for approval of item number thirty-three. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Okay, motion passes. Number thirty-four, under Mayor's Items, Acknowledge Central State's Fair Update, Mr. Ron Jeffries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Last time I was here, I took thirteen minutes, and the meeting lasted thirty-three, and the mayor chastised me afterwards for running over. I promise not to take the majority of the meeting tonight.
Well, thanks.
So Central State's Fair starts Friday, we're pretty excited, we've got a great lineup for you. Our theme this year is Vote for Fun. And with the political whirlwind that we're experiencing right now, and oftentimes the conversations leading to vote for one party candidate versus another one is a vote against, not a vote for, we started battling that around in the office a little bit, and came up with the idea of, wouldn't it be neat if you actually felt good about voting for something? And so we said, "Well, they can, we can vote for Central State's Fair." So Mayor, Councilwoman Doyle has a presentation for you, and we'd like her to give you your own version of Vote for Fun, the Vote for Fun official T-shirt on the Central State's Fair, in hopes that you will wear it during your next election. We extend an invitation to everybody on the city council, and, and everyone within the Black Hills, actually, to come out and enjoy, join us for the Central State's Fair. Lot of fun and exciting things going on, and I left schedules for each of you, I hope you received them. I wanted to point out a couple of things, and the first thing I wanted to point out was that we have a ribbon-cutting to kick the fair off this Friday at three o'clock. It'll be at the McDonald's stage, and we'd like you to be there if you can, it'll be a nice little social, we'd love to have you come out if you can make that happen. New activities. So we've got a Longhorn show, and it's a world qualifier Longhorn show for the first time ever at the Central State's Fair. This breed of cattle is exploding for us. I think we have sixty entries, which is more than we have for certain breeds during the stock show. I mean, just really being well-received, and part of it is being a world qualifier. Their, their competitors will come to Rapid City to show Longhorn cattle in hopes to make it to the, to their world show. So they'll gather points by showing here to go to the world show. Wonderfully successful as we go into it, so we're very excited about that. We also have, for the first time in about six years, the 4H extension is bringing all the 4H exhibits back to the county fair. So the Pennington County exhibitors will have their 4H achievement days during the fair. Previously have done that prior to the fair in preparation for the state fair, but this year we are working very well with extension, so the kids will have their products back at the 4H booth at the same time that all the rest of the exhibits will be on display. Along with that, our youth cattle shows are also expanding. I couldn't believe it here, we're getting a lot more entries from out of state. People, youth from out of state coming to Rapid City to show during the fair, so we're excited about that. We're offering exotic petting zoo free to the kids, and everybody, but it's a free thing, something the kids will be excited to come in and get a chance to see a zebra, an impala, or camel, or just animals that aren't necessarily native to South Dakota. We've got a bunch of new carnival rides, including the Spin Out, which I'm trying to get Charity to ride, but she said, "No way." But we do have a children's ride, which is a balloon Ferris wheel coming as well, so lots of new carnival rides coming in, and we're very excited to work with Carnival Americana for that as well. Bud Light is bringing the Bud Light Beer Garden for the adults, so we'll have a new, a new entertainment area, where we'll have televisions, and you can watch the Olympics or anything else while you're in that area. And we're also working with the Freshman Impact to do the driver safety alcohol awareness program. On the flip side of things, for the program that the chief runs in all the schools for the freshmen, where they have an opportunity to, I guess, we refer to them as the, the drunk goggles, but it's a chance for them to come back in and experience what under the influence feels like, and so we're excited to be able to partner with that. In addition of the Black Hills Power Energy lineup, or the Black Hills Energy lineup concert series, Jake Owen, Montgomery Gentry, Dustin Evans, Mickey and the Motor Cars, Casey and the Sunshine Band, and Little River Band, so we're very excited about that. The only thing we're missing on the stage is Diddy and the Pharaohs. And then, uh, yeah, we still could take care of that. We've got Supercross races, the Johnson Machine Demolition Derby, ranch rodeo, and then during our Range Days Rodeo. We've got two things I wanted to bring up to your attention. One of them is that Thursday, the twenty-fifth, we've got Military Appreciation Night, so we'll take that opportunity to recognize the men and women who served from both locally South Dakota National Guard and Ellsworth Air Force Base. And then on Saturday, the twenty-seventh, we're also doing a recognition of a first responders from the Rapid City-Pennington County areas, so we'll take an opportunity to recognize police, fire, sheriff, 911 dispatch, a chance to recognize those persons who also make our daily lives safe in, in this area. So we're very excited about it, and we hope that you take a moment in your busy schedules to come and join our group of fun-seeking people. So please join us, Central State's Fair, starting this Friday.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Appreciate all the work you're doing out there, and look forward to a good fair this year.
Great, thank you.
Okay, now we're on to public, oh, sorry. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor, and Ron, if you could come up, I would greatly appreciate it. I just want, you mentioned military appreciation, I just wanted to make sure and maybe mention it, but is the Gold Star, I don't know if I'm getting it right, is there a display, is it the Gold Star families, or Gold Star for the soldiers who have given the ultimate sacrifice from South Dakota? There's gonna be a display at the?
You're above my pay grade. I'm not, I'm not positive. I know they have a number of activities that are set up around military appreciation. I can tell you that anybody with a military ID and their immediate family get in free through the gate and to the rodeo that night. So we intend to honor the military and bring them through, and the same thing holds true for the first responders on the Saturday night rodeo. First responders and their families with ID come through the front gate and through the rodeo, so.
Okay, and I just wanted to pass on many thanks, obviously. If you could pass on, and I'll just speak for the council, but if you could pass on to them, you know, many, many thanks for the impact that this has every year, not just financially, but, you know, for people and families to go and enjoy. Obviously, you mentioned a lot of the livestock things that happened, a lot of people don't think about when they think about the fair, maybe they think about just rides or the beer garden. I don't think about the beer garden at all, I don't. But anyway, I'll probably be there for sure for that, but I do love to go through the livestock areas and some of the petting zoo stuff for the kids, so its impact is very, very large, and I just wanted to pass on to you to, many thanks, to pass on to, to your staff and to yourself, obviously, for the great hard work that you put in every year for this event, so thank you very much.
Thank you, I've got a great crew. Thank you.
Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor, I will make a motion to acknowledge. I just want to mention, there's a lot of free stuff at the fair, too. You pay your entry to get in, and there is just, you can go all day, so.
Okay, motion in a second to acknowledge, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Ron, again. Now we're on to public hearing items, items thirty-five through forty-seven. There are no speaker requests, so we won't have a public hearing. We'll go on to consent public hearing items, items thirty-five through thirty-nine. Council may remove any of these items, or we can have a motion to approve all of them.
Motion to approve thirty-five through thirty-nine.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve thirty-five through thirty-nine. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. We'll go to item number forty, under non-consent public hearing items, and since it's an ordinance, we're gonna go back to John Roberts again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Number forty, number sixteen, RZ-021, second reading, ordinance sixty-one twenty-six, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Gordon Howey for Black Hills Crisis Pregnancy Center for rezoning from medium-density residential district to office-commercial district for property generally described as being located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Haynes Avenue and Anamosa Street, and I recommend approval.
Motion in a second for approval of item forty. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, forty-one.
Forty-one, number sixteen, RZ-022, second reading, ordinance sixty-one twenty-seven, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for ZCO Incorporated for rezoning from office-commercial district to light-industrial district for property generally described as being located in the southeast corner of the intersection of Creek Drive and Marlin Drive, and I recommend approval.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval, and we'll go to Lisa Modrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to acknowledge, as we're looking at this ordinance, and we're going forward with the growth that's happening on Marlin Drive, Elk Vale, Creek Drive, there's a lot of citizens' concerns right now on the area. There's business growth as well as residential growth, and the speed of the zones are, are, we're showing more accident possibilities, and it's actually creating some, some concerns by those that are out there. So I want to make sure, as we're going into the reading and we're building up that area, and we're building it like we are, we may need to consider, I, I believe we do have some stoplight opportunities there, I know we're watching for the patterns and making sure that we've got enough traffic, but what we've got is a, an area that has an accident entrance that is not safe, and we may need to take a look at that as we are continuing to grow and accept these, these projects out there. And I just wanted to speak on that, thank you.
John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since Alderwoman Modric brought this up, may I ask a question to Dale Tech?
Yes, you may.
Thank you, Dale. I know there's been a lot of concern for that light on the intersection of Elkvale and Minnesota Street out there. Have we had any more contact with the DOT concerning traffic counts, and are we getting close to being able to bring that in as far as?
I can't definitively say. I know the DOT is taking a continuous look at that. I don't know where they're at in the process. I'd have to inquire.
Okay. If you would, that'd be wonderful. I know there's also been a couple of state legislators that have been talking about it and possibly bringing it through the state house in the next session, because there's a lot of concern about that area out there with residents, so, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to approve. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Item forty-two, please. Or was that forty-two?
That was forty-two, forty-three. Number sixteen, RZ zero-two-four, second reading, ordinance sixty-one-twenty-nine, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for ZCO Incorporated for rezoning from general agricultural district to light-industrial district for property generally described as being located east of the intersection of Creek Drive and Marlin Drive, and I recommend approval.
Okay, timeout. Heidi, did we skip forty-two?
We did.
I think that's, yeah, so, let's go back. Let's scratch that and go back to, and read forty-two.
Okay, let's do forty-two, then. Excuse me. Number sixteen, RZ zero-two-three, second reading, ordinance one sixty-one-twenty-eight, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for ZCO Incorporated for rezoning from general agricultural district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located south of Elkvale Road between Creek Drive and Marlin Drive, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Motion in a second for approval of item forty-two. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Forty-three's already been read into the record.
And I recommended approval.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second on item forty-three. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item forty-four, please.
Number sixteen, RZ zero-two-five, second reading, ordinance sixty-one-thirty, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for SSST LLC for rezoning from general agricultural district to general commercial district for property generally described as being located south of the intersection of Elkvale Road and East Minnesota Street, and I recommend approval.
Motion in a second for approval of item forty-four. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Forty-five, please.
Number sixteen, RZ zero-two-six, second reading, ordinance sixty-one-thirty-one, and ordinance amending section seventeen point oh-six of chapter seventeen of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by KTM Design Solutions Incorporated for SSST LLC for rezoning from general agricultural district to office-commercial district for property generally described as being located west of East Minnesota Street and south of Marlin Drive, and I recommend approval.
Motion in a second for approval of item forty-five. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Forty-six, please.
Number sixteen, VR zero-zero-three, a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers Incorporated for Roger and Heidi Hanslick for a vacation of right-of-way for property generally described as being located at four-zero-one-eight Colly Baja Streets, and I recommend we continue this to the September sixth, two thousand sixteen city council meeting.
Okay. Motion in a second to postpone or continue this to September sixth. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Forty-seven, please.
Number sixteen, TI, TI, or T-one-zero-zero-three? Is it an I or a one?
Aye.
TI zero-zero-three, Highway sixteen sewer, a request by Ken Hag for Alta Terra Development to consider an application to amend project plan for tax increment District number seventy, Highway sixteen sewer for property generally described as being located, Catron Boulevard from Fifth Street to South US Highway sixteen, then south along US Highway sixteen to Samus Trail and east to the proposed Highland Crossing subdivision, and I recommend we continue this to the September nineteenth, two thousand sixteen council meeting.
Okay. Motion in a second to continue this item to September nineteenth. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say no. Motion carries. Item number forty-eight is the bill list, and we'll go to Finance Officer Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no changes to the bill list that, which is attached, so the total is nine million